Best part is to YouTube. Okay, we're live.
Okay, great. All right. So can the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kramer?
Here.
Hyatt?
Here.
Vitas?
Here.
Allenier?
Here.
Mayor Powers?
Here. Okay, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. And Glenn, why don't you lead us in the pledge? And I'm sure John has the usual flag. Thank you.
There we go. We pledge allegiance to this.
To the flag.
To the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic.
Republic. The work of change.
Change. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
That's probably the hardest thing to do in Zoom, so maybe next time we'll practice ahead of time. But thank you, Glenn, very much. Okay, public comment. This is a time provided so that persons may speak to the commission on any item not on this agenda. Please make your comments as brief as possible. The commission cannot act on items not included on this agenda. However, the items will be referred to city staff automatically. Any public comment?
I did not receive any public comment.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll carry on and move to item number one, which is approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to approve the minutes? Review the minutes?
I have a comment about.
Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
April 13th. After the action was taken, the applicant indicated a willingness to work with staff on adding landscaping to the project. And I would like that noted in the minutes.
Okay, great. And you guys brought up a good topic because I know Commissioner Vitus has something to say as well. So if you guys don't mind doing the hand raising thing, so we can make sure I don't ignore you and I get to everyone. So thank you. Commissioner Vitus?
I was just going to move that we approved the minutes of April 6th and 13th with the one amendment for Glenn, as far as the landscaping.
Okay.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Kramer?
Hi.
Hyatt?
Hi.
Vitas?
Hi.
Allenier?
Hi.
Mayor Powers?
Hi. You said Mayor Powers.
That's next time.
No.
Yeah, all habits.
Okay, prior to going to the public hearing, item number two, I just wanted to do a couple of housekeeping items. So what we're going to have is we are going to have staff give us a presentation. And we are actually going to have the consultants give us a presentation. After which time, we will be able to ask any questions that we might have with regard to the item. And then we will open it up to public comment, and we will have public comment. And then we will bring it back to the commission. Once we bring it back to the commission, if you have any further questions. And also if a city manager and the consultants can answer any questions from the public comment, we will do that at that time. And then we'll bring it back to the commission for consideration to move this forward to the city council. And I'm sure everyone's in agreement that that's how we're supposed to be doing it. So that's how we're going to do it here today. So item number two, general plan, housing and safety element update. City manager, would you like to start?
Oh.
I can't hear you, John.
Yeah, no, I'll start. I see Commissioner Hyatt has a question.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Are we going to go through the housing element first with questions? And then go through the safety element second with questions? Or are you going to take both housing element, then safety element, and then questions?
Um, no, we'll actually, there are actually two presentations tonight on both. So what we'll do is we'll take questions on one, then we'll take questions on the next.
And we will, we will, thanks, Commissioner Hyatt, we will follow the same procedure with each item. And, okay.
So, man and chair members of the commission, so the state of California requires that all cities have a general plan. The state actually has nine mandatory elements for the general plan, one of which is the housing element. The housing element is one of the items that is required to be updated. At least either every five years or every eight years, depending on the approval from the state Housing and Community Development Department. The city of Auburn began this process in 2019 as they began moving towards the hire of a consultant, the assemblage of quite a bit of data. And then public workshops, meetings with the planning commission, meetings with the city council, there was a joint meeting. The process actually goes through a very extensive review. Much of the items that are included in it are technical, but eventually they evolve into recommendations, goals, objectives, some programs that the city would adopt. And then finally, you have the actual document. The city of Auburn going through all of this has led to the document that you have tonight, which is the fully vetted version, which has included not only the input from the commission, the city council. But finally, there's a draft that is taken through the mill at the state Housing Community Development Department, which reviews the housing element and through state OES for the safety element. Tonight, I'm going to introduce Jennifer Gastelum. She is a principal planner with Placeworks. They have been the consulting team who has gone through, assembled all the information, worked with HCD and with CalOES on each one of these elements. Tonight represents the point where the commission will give a recommendation on this final draft of the document to the city council. That hearing before the city council is scheduled for Monday, the 24th. So we're on a very short timeline because the state puts you on a pretty tight timeline. So with that, why don't I go ahead and turn it over to Jennifer Gastelum, and she will handle things for her team. The first thing we'll talk about is the housing element, and then we will move on to the safety element. So why don't we go ahead to Jennifer? And hopefully Amy got my note, but Jennifer will be sharing a presentation from her screen, so we'll make her a co-host. So why don't we let Jennifer take it away?
All right. Thank you, John. Good evening, Jennifer Somme, Placeworks. I am going to share my screen. I have with me today Cynthia Walsh. Her and I are going to tag team the housing element presentation. And then we will pause the presentation for your comments, and then we'll pass off to Eli Crispy to give his presentation on the safety element. So give me one second here, and I will get this going. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Okay, so as our city manager talked about, I'm going to go over the housing element, just a refresher for everyone about why we're doing this. And then Cynthia is going to dive in to some of the changes that were made to the previous draft that you saw. And then the next steps from here. And then, like I said, we'll pause, and then we'll get to the safety element, and then your discussion. So I wanted to kick it off with just a schedule to kind of update you on where we started and where we were. Some of you attended the stakeholder meeting that was March 2nd, which feels like 100 years ago. But it was pre-pandemic where we actually all got to meet in person. So that was kind of fun. It was actually the last meeting we had in person before pandemic started. So I was very excited that we got to get in a in-person workshop for Auburn. Subsequently, none of our other housing elements had an in-person workshop. So we got some great information there. We did publish the public review draft in August. And then took it to city council for a hearing in October. And we submitted to HCD, and again, the city manager mentioned. So we did go through two rounds of review with the, with the state Housing and Community Development Department. And then the safety element did go through a CAL FIRE review that was also 90 days. We did do a call with HCD to discuss comments on the document. And as was mentioned, we did receive a conditional compliance letter, which means that the draft, the way that it is now, is in compliance with state law. Tonight, we are here, and we are going to city council next Monday. And then we will, they will hopefully adopt it, and then we will send it off to HCD for a 90-day certification. The due date for the housing element was May 15th. That is the day that all the housing elements needed to be adopted by, the state identifies that you have 120-day leeway from that period. So right now, we're in the grace period. So adoption May 24th, where there's no penalty for you being, you know, two weeks late at this point. But adopting May 24th, and then you'll be in compliance. So if you were to look on HCD's website, it would say that you're, you know, conditionally certified right now because that's the status of the housing element. So getting into the actual document. The housing element prop planning period is 2021 through 2029. And as I mentioned, the due date was October 15th, but you do technically have till September 10th to get into, to adopt it, to stay in compliance. The housing element is unique in the fact that we look at the existing needs, as well as we project out the housing needs for the next eight-year period. We also, I look at, we do a thorough analysis of vacant and land, as well as land that might potentially be underutilized and available to accommodate development. We also do a checks and balances process where we look at the previous housing element from the past eight years. And we look at what programs were accomplished, what programs were not accomplished. We identify the reasons why, and whether they should be carried forward or not. And that kind of sets forth what the goals and policies will be for this next eight-year period. We also take into consideration the outreach that was done, as I mentioned, the meeting. We also did consultations with service providers who represent different organizations throughout the region. What drives the housing element process is the regional housing needs allocation. So the state identifies a growth projection number for the next eight years. And then that number is then allocated out to the councils of governments. In our case, that is the Sacramento area Council of Government. And then, which you see there, growth projection for the next eight years is 117,850. And then SAACOG does their methodology to identify how they allocate their land. And based on the methodology, Auburn's RENA allocation is 310. It's important to identify that this is a land exercise in identifying that the city has enough sites at varying densities to accommodate 310 additional units, should the market build these units. It is not the job of the city to build these units. It's the job of the city to set forth land available at varying densities, as well as to set forth goals that help incentivize the development of all housing in Auburn. This is our meeting, the regional housing needs allocation table. So as you'll see in the housing element, in addition to a big section on demographics, there's a very detailed section on sites that are identified to be able to accommodate the arena. When you look at the very low and low income, the top two categories here, we're looking at a land density of around 20 units an acre. So a multifamily-type product. And there's not a one-size-fits-all in meeting the land inventory. So we looked at, we are projecting out accessory dwelling units, that's second units, granny flat type units. So based on numbers of ADUs, accessory dwelling units that have been built, we can actually project an amount that will be done over the next eight-year period. And we have projected 91. And then based on SAACOG actually did a ADU survey to identify how much rents are. So based on their survey, we were able to say that we couldn't estimate that about 51 ADUs will be potentially built over the next eight years at, that will accommodate very low and low income. And this would be potentially like, you know, your mother-in-law who's on social security, or a college student who is home, who is, you know, paying very little rent and those kinds of things. Now, your moderate income, which is a duplex-type product or attached house, so a medium-density product. And then above moderate is all your single-family homes. So as I mentioned, we look at ADUs, we look at infill, infill vacant land opportunities. So land that might have something on it, but that can accommodate more development. And then the Baltimore Ravine specific plan has identified sites that could be accommodated to meet the RENA. So it's not a, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We use a lot of different opportunities to meet the RENA and to show that there is development potential throughout the community at all of these varying densities. I'm going to pass it over to Cynthia, and she's just going to highlight some of the changes to the housing element based on what the state is looking for. And then we'll get to your questions. Thank you.
All right, good evening. So as a part of the housing element update process, the document was submitted to HCD on November 20th. That was for the initial 60-day review period. Then in January, we did have a call with HCD to discuss their initial findings, comments. And then we provided revisions to the draft to address those items. After we addressed those comments, the city did end up receiving a findings letter, which included additional revisions that were needed to meet state law. So the document was resubmitted again on February 22nd for an additional 60-day review period. Again, we had an informal call with HCD, and we provided additional edits. That was around, in the beginning of April. And then the city did receive a conditional compliance letter on April 19th. And this compliance letter states that the draft meets all statutory requirements of state housing element law, if it is adopted as is. So everything, the way the document reads as of right now. Next slide. So the next two slides, I will go over the revisions that were made during those informal review periods and to address the findings letter. So bear with me on these. I'll try to move through them quickly. So policy 1.7 was added to allow housing developments with at least 20% affordable housing by right on sites that were included in the previous two housing element cycles. Measure A was revised to include the promotion of housing development in the Baltimore Ravine specific plan and the historic design review districts. And also to encourage the integration of low-income units and units for special needs populations. Measure E was revised to annually confirm with property owners their intent to renew the affordability of their projects and to ensure that proper noticing was provided to tenants. Next slide. Measure F was revised to expand the list of special needs populations, including all of the groups that have been identified per state law. And to highlight that ongoing information would be available on the city's website and to developers directly regarding incentives. Measure G was revised to include expanded fair housing activities. Measure H was revised to coordinate with Placer County annually to identify funding sources to support emergency shelter programs. Measure I was revised to include annual updates to the city's website to provide additional information on SEQA exemptions and expedited processing, as well as activities that result in reduction of impact fees and objective design standards. Next slide. Measure J was revised to meet with the ultra-regional center within a year to begin coordination on support for individuals with developmental disabilities. Measure L was revised to comply with Employee Fair Housing Act and to update the definition of an SRO, or also called a rooming and boarding house. Measure N was revised to develop and implement an ADU monitoring program. This is a new requirement, since the city is relying on ADUs to meet a portion of the arena with ADUs. The state wants to have some sort of monitoring program to monitor the affordability and the development, to ensure they're staying on track with our projections. Next slide. Measure P was added to include that the city will annually monitor the vacant land inventory and ensure that the city is accommodating the regional housing need throughout the planning period, which is 2021 to 2029. Measure Q, we added to evaluate and remove barriers to housing production by monitoring policies, regulations, and procedures on an annual basis. We also made edits to the background report. We made revisions to the review of previous portion of the document, which looks at your past programs. So we highlighted ongoing efforts to implement the inclusion of public comment. And we included a list of service providers and agency advocacy groups that we contacted for input. We also added a discussion on vacant sites that were available for emergency shelters. Um, we made edits to clarify where mobile home parks were permitted. One more slide, sorry. Yep, thank you. We added an additional discussion on fair housing issues with the city, including a discussion on displacement risk, patterns of discrimination, and access to opportunities. We added clarification on the number and affordability of units in the Baltimore Ravine specific plan and added additional phasing requirements that's tied to that plan. Next slide. We also included affordability distribution of ADUs, and specifically in the Baltimore Ravine specific plan as well. And we added agencies that provide water and sewer service and clarified that the city anticipated sewer service, this, the city's anticipated sewer service capacity. We also added discussion on the mitigation of environmental constraints through development and clarification on the city's vacancy rates. I'm almost done. We also added a discussion of ADU permitting requirements and added that the city's current compliant, currently compliant with state law. Clarification was added on the timeframe from project approval to issuance of a building permit. We also clarified reasonable accommodation procedure and clarified the city's current definition of family. We added a comparison of Auburn's development standards to neighboring jurisdictions. And we included a discussion of residential care facilities and their regulations. And I believe that goes through all of those. Thank you for bearing with me. I know that's a lot.
So thank you. I'm going to recommend that you probably keep that presentation because some people, some of the commissioners will probably ask you to jump back to a page or two. I know for sure that I will. I don't see any hands raised, but I'm going to guess I'm going to start with Commissioner Hyatt and see if he has any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Trevor, Susan, Bridget. I actually have a couple of questions. The first is with respect to the table, meeting the the RENA table. So you might want to pull that up. And I can ask the question as you're pulling it up. But excuse me for my engineering background, but I'm always looking for, how is it that we determine a unit surplus of 1,076 units? And no matter how I look through this table and add things up, I can't figure out how that unit surplus is determined. You know, by looking or adding the RENA of 310, the projected ADUs of 91, and then subtracting that from some of the others, I can't come up with a number. Is there, is it, is that unit surplus related to the other numbers in the table?
Leave it to the engineer to check our math. It looks like it should be 1,176, should be the unit surplus.
So it is, so we are not including the first column. The first column is our RENA. So if you add up the second, the third, the fourth, and the fifth column, it should get us to the last column. Is that correct, Cynthia?
It should be, but I think that our numbers may be.
I, when I checked, Jennifer's explanation is right on. 91 plus 570 plus 653 plus 72, and then minus 310. That's, that's 1,000.
Okay, well then, then I see like in the column before, just going to the above moderate income, 1 plus 353 plus 145 does not equal 357.
That is correct. That does not add up.
So the first, so we have our income category. Is the math incorrect, or am I?
No, I don't know. I'm going to do it.
So if the math was correct, it would be that there's the income category, and then there is the 2021 to 2029 RENA. So that's the number we're trying to meet.
So it's, it should be 358. So again, we're just adding up the, the second, the third, and the fourth columns. And then we subtract that from the first column, and that gets us to our surplus. So that means we have above the 310. So is, that's the, the part.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we will double-check our numbers to make sure that.
Well, the, it's correct in the housing element, I assume. It's just our presentation. So that's off by one.
And yeah, sometimes that happens in Excel. They round the incorrect direction for us, but we'll double-check that.
Thank you for the explanation. And I'm assuming that before this is relayed to city council that this could be correct.
That is correct. We will fix it immediately.
Any other questions, Steve?
Yeah, the only other question I had is actually going back, it's prior to the presentation. But in the document titled Auburn Planning Commission Special Session, excuse me, titled, the document titled Report to Auburn City Council and Planning Commission, which was just a few-page report. On page five, there are attachments, and it lists all the attachments. But the last attachment is the SEQA addendum. And it says that's submitted under separate cover. I was just kind of surprised that there is a SEQA addendum. Because my understanding is there's no significant effect on the environment for this. And so why would you need to amend SEQA?
I can answer that.
Thank you.
Yeah, what, what we did is we included the options of, in the staff report. So instead of being an addendum, it goes, we, the staff report in the last section explains the options under SEQA. And it's, it's just included there versus in a separate addendum. On pages three and four of the staff report, it, it goes through, it explains that. And it basically says that in this case, it doesn't require the addendum. So I should have just deleted that as an addendum in the back. So it's, it's actually covered in the staff report versus as a separate item.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are the only questions I have.
Any other commissioners? Seeing, seeing none, I will start. I want to discuss Baltimore Ravine and what portion of Baltimore Ravine did you include? The Baltimore Ravine specific plan was approved many years ago. And as time went on during the economic downturn, the local tribe actually purchased a large portion of the Baltimore Ravine. And although I, on occasion says they will develop it, I have mostly heard they're going to keep it for the tribe. So did you include the entire Baltimore Ravine specific plan? Or did you include the portion of the Baltimore Ravine plan that's not included in tribal land?
So we are not aware of which portion is in tribal land. There is an affordability requirement within the Baltimore Ravine specific plan, and that's what we are relying on to meet the RENA. The additional units, which I believe is 242, that is above and beyond what is needed. So we just relied on the affordability requirement in the plan.
So basically, what we're doing here is saying, this is what we have. This is our availability of vacant land. This is our availability of the potential ADUs. And this is what we're. And this is what we're presenting to the state that we hope is something that we can follow. But if Baltimore Ravine ends up not getting developed, then are, are we still able to meet the requirements? Go ahead, city manager.
Yeah, if I can answer that, the Baltimore Ravine, uh, specific plan actually had a milestone uh, this, this April, where they were required, the United Auburn Indian Council was required to either A, exercise an option on that for an additional five years. Uh, they had to pay an amount to the city, $50,000, uh, to extend it for an additional five years. I can tell you that we've been in contact with them. They did, uh, uh, provide, uh, the, the money. We did execute the addendum. So as of right now, the Baltimore Ravine specific plan is 100% in play.
Perfect. I, thank you. I did not, I thought that they were going to exercise their option for five more years, but I had not been advised of that as of yet. So thank you for that. And then a, a couple more questions, which might have more to do with city managers. For example, like Measure I. Um, obviously, we're gonna be needing staff, more staff, to run and operate some of these programs that we are required to put into place. And I'm guessing you're prepared for that.
Um, yeah, as far as, uh, the city is required, we're required to have a housing element, we're required to, uh, do these activities. And quite frankly, we need to, uh, both not only budget, but also allocate our resources in a sense to do that. I was on the, uh, phone this afternoon with, uh, with Cynthia, and we were talking about just that. And there are, uh, as I met with Jennifer and Cynthia today, uh, there's some money through SB2, uh, that we should free up to start putting some of these things in place. Uh, the reality is, is that part of what the city of Auburn does is part of our general plan, is part of our police powers, is we do things, uh, when it comes to housing. So, uh, the city needs to, uh, come up with this thing. We need to prioritize it. And we need to, to quite frankly, work on it. And as something like the Baltimore Ravine specific plan, there's another project on Blocker Drive. We need to be talking about this. Uh, and it, there's a, there needs to be a greater discussion. So, um, yes.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my, my final, um, question is, on March 2nd, I believe you had the stakeholder meeting, which, um, for some reason I was not aware of it, and that's okay. Um, is there a reason why it went to the city council first before it came to the planning commission to help with any information or changes? Um, I know we've had a weird year, but was there some method to why it didn't come to us for us to see it before today?
I'm not aware. Um, this was the schedule. I think it was, uh, I think, um, at the time, staff wanted to quickly get it off to HCD. Um, but I'm not aware of the specifics on why that, why it did not come to you, other than I know that it was a hurry up and get it to the state for the 60-day review and that it would come through you upon approval.
If I remember correctly, I believe it may have been a joint meeting.
Thank you.
The, the, uh, the October 12th was a joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council. And, uh, it hasn't really gone back to the city council. We recite, received the input, and quite frankly, uh, we have, the, the staff and the consulting team have stayed with the draft that went with that absent any specific discussion from HCD. So, uh, uh, you are the first ones to see this final new and improved, uh, version. But you see it first, you make a recommendation, and it'll go to the council on Monday.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And I don't see any other hands raised. So I would like to take, um, open this up for public comment. Do we have any public comment? And, um, the city clerk's sort of in charge of that, and I'm guessing she's going to say.
Well, we didn't receive any public comment on this item ahead of time. I have the members of the public that are, um, on the Zoom tonight. I have them in this room. So if they wanted to make a public comment at this time, they would just need to unmute and, um, state their name and their comment.
Okay.
It looks like there's no public comment at this.
Yeah, it looks like there's no public comment, so I'll bring it back to the counts, uh, the commission. Sorry about that. Um, for further discussion or, um, a motion. Any further discussion? Fred, you're on, um, mute, in case you didn't know. So is Steve. And so, um, so if I see no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion for item A.
I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approve general plan amendment adopting the city of Auburn 2021 through 2029 housing element.
I'll second that.
Okay, can the clerk call the roll, please? Mr. Kramer?
Hi.
Hyatt?
Hi.
Vitis?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
And Chair Powers?
Hi, thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number B, the Auburn, city of Auburn safety element. So Eli, I think that's you.
Yes, it is. Uh, thank you, commissioners. Uh, I have a, a very quick presentation on the safety element for you tonight. So recent changes to state law require that, uh, when the housing element is updated, that the safety element also be reviewed and updated as needed to incorporate any new information or to comply with any recent regulatory changes. So as part of the housing element update, we have, uh, also updated the safety element. We have done so in response to, uh, several new laws that have passed since the current health safety element was adopted. Uh, we've also incorporated new information around, uh, the changing hazards and changing risks in and around Auburn. And we've wanted to make sure that the policies that are in the safety element are being responsive to these new hazard situations. The, uh, the updates to the safety element have taken a few different forms. Uh, we have gone back and updated the background information in the safety element. And that's again, to be responsive to state law, which now specifies certain items that need to be included in there. Also, just to make sure that the information is accurate and consistent with our current understanding of the issues. We have redone the mapping in the safety elements, again, to make it clearer and more legible, uh, to add mapping in response of state law, and to make sure that we are using the most recent and up-to-date data in that map, in the maps. We have, uh, preserved some of the existing policies in the safety element, carried them through wholesale. Uh, others have been revised, and then there are entirely new policies that have been added, again, to fill gaps, making sure we're being responsive to the issues and addressing what the state now says needs to be included in safety elements. Uh, we've also incorporated some of the recent planning documents that have been adopted, uh, by Auburn and, uh, by the region. So that includes the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was last updated in 2016, and is currently being updated now. Uh, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Uh, we've also incorporated elements from the Placer County Sustainability Plan, uh, which was adopted last year. Now, the document does only apply technically to the unincorporated areas, but there are opportunities for the county to work with Auburn and other incorporated communities to create more of a, a regional, uh, safety, uh, framework. So where it's made sense to bring in information from that county-wide plan, uh, we have done so. The, you can see on the left, the topics that are in the existing safety elements. Uh, we have largely preserved those, adding the new information and policies and mapping as required. And then on the right, we have added a handful of additional topics, and that is in response to changes in state law. So the state now says that we have to address the threats that are posed by climate-related hazards. Uh, some of those, such as wildfire, flooding, uh, those are already covered under the existing element. But there are a handful of additional topics, such as drought, extreme heat, severe storms and the like, that were not previously addressed. So we have made sure to go in and add information and policies relevant to those topics. We have added in information on the people and the assets who may be most at risk of natural hazards in and around Auburn. And again, that is, uh, in response to a state law that came into effect about four years ago. And then lastly, we have identified, uh, areas in Auburn where there is the potential for a limited evacuation, you know, areas where a rapid evacuation may prove challenging, uh, may be constrained due to narrow roadways or only one point of ingress and egress. And that is in response to state law that went into effect at the beginning of 2020. So those areas are now mapped, and there are policies that are meant to improve the infrastructure in the area and support a more rapid evacuation, should one be required in the future. Because parts of Auburn are in what the state identifies as very high fire hazard severity zones, uh, the safety element does have to be reviewed by CAL FIRE. Uh, the element was submitted, the draft element was submitted to CAL FIRE back in October. Uh, the CAL FIRE Board, the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, uh, reviewed the element in December. Uh, they requested, uh, very minor revisions to one policy and an update to some of the map, uh, how the mapping was described. So those changes have been made and are reflected in the version of the element that is in your packet. And then the Placer County Airport Land Use Commission also reviewed the element last fall. They proposed some revisions to how we were describing hazards related to aircraft and airport operations and some of the associated policies, and those changes have been made as well. And that concludes the presentation on the safety element. So thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Eli. Um, I will open it up for questions from the commissioners. Does anyone have any questions? Um, Commissioner Hyatt?
Yeah, so in looking at the document itself, the, uh, draft safety element document, under Goal 8, Goal 8, which is, uh, to improve public safety and reduce crime levels in Auburn, uh, Policy 8.2 had an item that I was not familiar with, and I'm just curious as to what it is. But it says, quote, "The city shall draft and adopt a set of crime prevention through environmental design guidelines." I'm familiar with crime prevention. I'm familiar with environmental design guidelines, but I'm not clear on how the two relate to one another. Can you explain?
Yes, uh, crime prevention through environmental design is a philosophy of using the design of the built environment and the natural environment to create sort of a, a more welcoming and a more secure area. So for example, making sure that lighting at night is, uh, uniform and kind of covers a whole area. Making sure that the landscaping is welcoming, uh, designing streets and buildings so that there are windows facing the streets, uh, that the streets are active, you know, making sure there are more people, making it easier for more people to be about, people to be able to view the streets. And things like this are all meant to foster a more safe, uh, area that is less conducive to some types of crime, perhaps.
Thank you for the education. That was the only question I had.
Okay, um, any other commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to, um, um, tell you I have none, and we'll open this up to public comment. So we'll see if any of our guests have any public comment. It appears that we do not have public comment. Hopefully, I gave that enough time. And so I'll bring it back to the commission for further questions or, uh, a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approve a general plan amendment amending the city of Auburn safety element.
I'd like to second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk call the roll, please? Commissioner Kramer?
Hi.
Hyatt?
Hi.
Vitis?
Hi.
Gallagher?
Hi.
And Chair Powers?
Hi, thank you very much, um, Jennifer, Cynthia, Eli, and city manager for your hard work on this. As a planning commission, we are here, ready, willing, and able to help and support all of these activities in any way, shape, or form you see that we can participate. So thank you very much, and I look forward to probably seeing you again sometime. So have a great evening. You're welcome to hang around for a little longer. But I see the city manager doesn't know how to raise his hand, but he's raising his hand.
Okay. No, uh, nowhere on my Zoom is the raise hand thing. I don't know if it's because I'm a host or whether I need to update, but, uh,
I'll come in, bro.
Amy, you've got a task tomorrow. Show me where the raise hand is on this thing. Um, uh, I'd, I'd like to request, uh, one more, uh, recommendation regarding, uh, item number one, and that's, uh, recommending that the city council adopt an addendum to the General Plan Environmental Impact Report for the General Plan Housing Element, and determine that the addendum is the appropriate level of documentation to satisfy the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act based on a determination that no new or substantially more severe impacts could result from the project. And the prior analysis contained in the Certified General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report adequately addresses environmental impacts as authorized by the State of California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, uh, Guidelines, Section 15164B, and recommend the city council determine the proposed amendments to the safety element are exempt from SEQA pursuant to state guidelines 15061, uh, subsection B, number three, the common sense objection. And, uh, you can just, uh, say I move that, and we'll get a second, and that would be the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, um, city manager. Um, we don't, uh, so you're determining that we actually don't have to actually have, uh, public comment on this item as well? Uh, I'm thinking that if we follow the proper procedure, you just mentioned to us what you would like for us to do. We asked, see if any of the commissioners have any questions, open it up for public comment, bring it back, and then make an adoption. Am I correct?
I do. We can do that.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. So Commissioner Hyatt has his hand raised.
Yeah, just a comment. I think, uh, uh, city manager, you meant to state that you'd like the planning commission to adopt this, whereas you started out your first statement by saying you would like city council to adopt this. Is that correct?
Um, um, you, you're making a rec, uh, it's the planning commission recommending to the city council, uh, to adopt it. So.
Oh, now I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so any other questions? I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
I just checked to make sure we didn't receive any live on the public comment email, and we don't have any public comment there as well.
Thank you so much. Um, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. And I would guess, because it's recorded and the city manager read the entire thing, that it's not necessary for one of you to reread it in, in saving time and your voice. Um, so I'll entertain a motion.
I, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we move forward in recommending to city council, uh, the item that our city manager brought forth.
Item number.
See.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. So clerk, call the roll, please. Commissioner Kramer?
Hi.
Hyatt?
Hi.
Vitis?
Hi.
Gallagher?
Hi.
And Chair Powers?
Hi, and thank you very much. And now, thank you, Jennifer, Cynthia, and Eli, for all your help.
Thank you. Great work.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, so let's go to staff follow-up reports. Um, I'm gonna guess, city manager, this is, um, something you're gonna talk to us about.
Um, you know, just a, a quick update on a couple of things. You know, just a quick update on a couple of things. Lots of planning going on in the region. Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, ECTPA, held a workshop last week on overall transportation planning within the greater Auburn area and also Placer County. I know our Chair see a lot of activities, so we'll keep you updated on that. Something to make everybody aware of, there's a position that is gonna be advertised starting next week, Economic and Planning Manager for the city. This is the flyer that's gonna go out on it. Just wanted to make sure that the Commission kind of had an understanding of the position. It's gonna have six key things that they're gonna work on, and three of them have to do with the with the Auburn Airport, and three of them have to do not with the airport. At the airport, the position's gonna manage leases and work with the businesses out there. Second is that it will work with the commercial brokers that work at the Auburn Industrial Park to attract and recruit businesses for any vacancies out there. The third thing with the airport is that the position is going to not manage the airport, but what it's gonna do is pursue both the state and the federal monies that come from FAA and from Caltrans to support the airport. The three other things that the position's gonna do, one of them has to do with planning. We will be assembling some of the past master plans and, and things that the city has done, try and wrap those into an overall specific or a master plan that would be within the core, which is basically from downtown down to Old Town. One of the key things that you adopted tonight, Goal Number One has policy elements that talk about looking to pursue mixed-use housing alternatives throughout the city. And that's what the master planning effort will do. Obviously, the Planning Commission will play a very important role in absolutely all of that. Fourth thing that it'll do is work on general economic development, working with the Chamber, the business associations. I will tell you that this is not gonna be a marketing position. This is gonna be mostly a pretty hardcore economic recruitment position. It will be going after larger fish than smaller fish for things. The Auburn Airport, without question, is probably one of our biggest assets when it comes to the whole city business community. So we'll work on that. But it'll also be working with the other things. And then finally, the position will work on state funding that comes to businesses, CDBG, EDBG monies, business loans, those types of things. So that position's gonna go out for recruitment starting next week. Matter of fact, I got done working on the flyer today. And then the final thing I have for you is that expect either mid, mid to late July or sometime in August, we are going to be having an all-city council committee and commission workshop. We'll have some type of a dinner. We'll bring everybody in. It'll be a chance for us just to get on the same page. We have new people that have come onto various committees and commissions in at least the past year. What we will be doing is we're working on an overall Commissioner handbook. We will talk about Robert's Rules of Order and Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and we will get the lecture. I always like to remind people, the City Attorney has to lecture you periodically about the do's and don'ts of being on a city commission. I've asked him to do the finger wag and to make sure that everybody eliminates the reply to all on your email. So look for that, and we will have some good dinner. Amy has promised that she will arrange for that. So I'll look for that to happen this summer, and that's it. Thank you.
Hopefully, she's making her famous chili, and I will happily be lectured, and I saw Commissioner Hyatt had a question.
Well, I just wanted to comment is, if it's going to be something other than a Tuesday night, the sooner you can let us know of a tentative date, the better.
Steve and I are backpackers, and we leave for the summer.
Yes, I already have some trips planned.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, Glenn?
Do you have any planning commission items for June?
Not right now, but I can tell you that we, we actually have a pretty key meeting on Monday regarding a project that we may, depending on where some things are at, may want to workshop with the Planning Commission on some things. But as of right now, we don't have anything in the hopper, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to meet. If anything, I think there are some key documents, and if anything, we can just meet for an hour. I would like to start reviewing some key documents that I know that we're working on with the city right now that I think, if anything, it would be worth forty-five minutes of everybody's time just to do a little bit of education. We seem to focus only on projects. Maybe sometimes it might be a good idea to focus on some policy stuff, too. So we will have at least one meeting in June.
I strongly support that. When you talked about a project, is it a project you're discussing with city council that is a development project that the Planning Commission should be seeing?
We actually have an application that's in right now. We haven't deemed it complete, but it would be, sometimes it's beneficial to, to maybe get some ideas to run them up the flagpole, but we'll see where that's gonna be at. Like I said, we have a key meeting on it on Monday from an internal staff perspective than we're gonna get with the applicant, but we'll see where that's gonna be at. It's, 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 there's, there's one thing out there right now, so just stay tuned on that.
Okay, so just to be clear, so it's not, it's something key that's going to the city council? You and your planning, community development department are talking about a key project that is sort of floating out there that you can't really talk about yet because an application hasn't been put forth?
Well, no, we have an application. But we may just bring that as an information item on something that we're working on. So we do have an application. We're just trying to see where it's at, but sometimes it benefits the Commission to be in the loop on, on some things. So I just, like I said, stay tuned on that. We'll see where it's gonna be. But like I said, without question, the Commission will meet at least once in, in June, and it may be on some policy things that we're working on. There are a couple of bleed-off elements from the housing element that we're gonna be working on that I certainly would love to get some input from the Commission on. It helps me to get your input instead of just bringing things cold to you. And like I said, there's a lot going on out there. Lot in the county, lot with transportation, a lot with SECOD, a lot of things with the legislature, and my goodness, you're a very, you're, you're one of our key Commissions. It's a good idea for me to get your input as for working on things because that's what you're here for.
Yeah, and we're ready, willing, and able at any time. That's what planning commissions are for. So we're here for you, City Manager. Any planning commission reports?
I have one.
Yes.
Traffic Committee met this morning. First item was the Baker and the Cake Maker. Parking has been an issue, so we approved a change in signage to be a maximum of two hours and be every day rather during the week. Mitchell Rothbart had some issues with traffic concerns up on Sky Ridge. They're gonna look at that, consider some additional signage. Sandra Reeves asked for some signage at the top of Robie Drive due to the impact of traffic speeding, that sort of thing. She wasn't here, so we table that till next time. Crosswalk at the intersection of Sherlin Track and Rosemary Drive. The Hennings had some issues with speeding and the inability for people to get across the street before the traffic came up the hill too fast, so they're gonna look at that. Speeding concerns everywhere in Auburn. And then lastly, I think probably the most important thing was we approved the $5,000 contract with Anderson Traffic Control to move ahead on the single-direction Lincoln Way, Upper Lincoln Way from Cleveland down to Hilton, Hillmont. So that's finally moving ahead, which is a nice thing. That's it. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Vitus. Information. If no one else has anything, I have one final thing. I did attend the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency meeting about the future of our roads. And although it was specific to Auburn in this particular meeting, I highly encourage you to go to their website as planning Commissioners and take a look and get into one of the next meetings. They're all on Zoom. They're very well-run. I was entertained the whole time and got a lot of information that I felt was important to our region and our community here. Lot of it about Highway 49. You get to have some input as to where you wanna see all of those tax, all of those funding dollars go, and as a small community, it was really, really quite awesome that they actually did the Highway 49 work that they're doing right now, and that's because of people like us on planning commissions that got engaged, spoke with the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and had a voice. So I highly encourage all of us as Commissioners, please pick one of the dates, attend the meeting. It was scheduled for two hours, and it went for about an hour and forty-five minutes. In a larger community, it probably will take the full two hours. And if you stay for the whole thing, you have a chance to win a $25 gift certificate at a nice little restaurant. So I just encourage you as my fellow planning Commissioners, please take a couple hours out of your time and find out what's happening with our roads regionally. It's, it's pretty important and has a big impact on us here.
I'm planning to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, with that, thank you so much, City Manager and Amy, who has a question.
I just wanted to bring up real quick, we had a public comment in the chat box from Sarah. She asked about rezoning of the historic downtown. As I'm not familiar with planning practices, I don't know if that has something to do with the element, housing element. Maybe staff can take that question.
So let me make sure we're doing this correctly. For Robert, I guess it's Zoom. So, City, City Manager, would you like to respond to that?
No, we don't have any of that on the topic of rezoning, anything for the historic downtown or anything. We, that, that's, we have absolutely nothing that we're working on on that whatsoever.
So, and, and because I'm guessing to the person who's asking the question, we're not 100% sure what type of rezoning are they discussing or thinking about? So perhaps maybe at one of our next meetings, I know part of the housing element was to allow for some higher density, including in our downtown and Old Town and Highway 49 corridor, probably related to, I always, I wanna say it right and not use the name brand Airbnb, but the, that type of housing. And I'm not sure, I'm just assuming. So maybe we can have an update on where we are with that process at our next meeting.
Okay, you know, potentially in some type of master plans, they kind of describe the Economic and Planning Manager position, working on some type of master plan, but quite frankly, that would be out a little bit. But we don't have anything specifically right now working on that, so.
So I see Sarah has her hand raised, and I'm trying to follow the Robert's Rules of Orders, and this is not an itemized, agendaized item. And so I think if we're gonna follow the proper regulations, it needs to be an information item. It needs to be noticed. Could you correct me, City Manager? Because I don't wanna disrespect her, but I also don't wanna break the law.
I, right, I guess either A, Sarah, if you wanna give me a call, I'd be happy to talk with you about some of these items, but the Chair is correct. If something's not on the agenda, we had our public comment section, and that's where it would kind of be picked up. But if, if you want, give me a call, and if you have any questions on this type of thing. And quite frankly, if, if there's anything that needs to be brought back to the Commission, I would, I will do that included in some things.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Sarah, for understanding. Okay, so anything else? I'm gonna then say thank you very much for your time. It's appreciated, and this meeting is adjourned.
Bye.
Thank you.